City Attorney, please refer to report out from closed session.
Madam Mayor, council met in closed session to discuss the contract city attorney performance evaluation, provided direction to staff.
Thank you. Okay, will you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I'm going to call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay, now we want to move to adoption of agenda.
So moved.
Any amendments?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's move forward. That brings us to oral communications, one. This is for any of the member, any member of the public that wants to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. Seeing no hands, we're going to move to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
So move, move to adoption of items A, B, C, D, E, F.
So moved, seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, so that moves us to public hearing. Consider introduction of ordinance 634 to amend Chapter 15.12 of the Brisbane Municipal Code to extend building permit expiration dates from 180 days from permit issuance to one year from permit issuance, consistent with state law AB 2913. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I think the mayor pretty much outlined the request. State law was changed recently to allow for building permits to be good for one year following issuance. Currently, the time limit is six months for someone to commence work after a permit is issued. The only, the intent of tonight's ordinance is to bring the city's municipal code into conformance with the provisions of state law, and we're recommending the council introduce ordinance 634 as recommended in the staff report. Thanks very much.
Council questions?
No, I have none.
I'd make a motion to, oh, it's a public hearing.
Open, yeah. So I'm going to go ahead and, do I have a motion to open public hearing?
You don't need one.
Do I need one? Okay, just move forward, great. Anyone from the public want to speak on this matter? Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 634.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The council has approved the introduction of ordinance number 634 to amend Chapter 15.12 of the Brisbane Municipal Code to extend building permit expiration dates from 180 days from permit issuance to one year from permit issuance, consistent with state law AB 2913. Required that I state that again, right? Say that a second time? Is that good? No? Okay. Well, just so we're all clear.
I wasn't sure, but thank you for your clarity.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
There we go. Now we all know.
Now I'm confused.
I'm a first timer, guys. Okay, so now we're going to move to new business, item A, accept the Open Space and Ecology Committee Report of Accomplishments. So do we have a staff report on this? Great.
Yes, we do, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'm Karen Kinser, I hope you know, Deputy Director of Public Works, and Adrian Atherton and I would like to update you on the OSEC's accomplishments for 2018. I wanted to give you a little background on the committee, in case anyone is not familiar. Council, a number of years ago, identified a goal to acquire and preserve upper Brisbane acres and other properties for their environmental value. To that end, they formed an Open Space and Ecology Committee to oversee the development of an open space plan for the city in 2001, shown on the slide on the left side. The committee at the time included two council members, one planning commissioner, and Warton Parks Beaches and Recreation Commissioner, and three members of the public. Over the next five years, the bylaws were amended to modify the composition, reform the committee as an advisory committee with five public members, and then in 2010, the number was increased to seven. Photo on the right depicts the current composition, less one member that's moved away, claritrees. Not flipping. There we go. As a citizen advisory body to council, OSEC's charter includes responsibility for open space planning, maintenance and monitoring, ecological sustainability issues, and making recommendations on city practices and policies related to natural resource conservation. In the area of open space protection, the committee reviews and approves an annual vegetation management plan, consisting primarily of removal of invasive plants and trees in the city-owned Brisbane acres. The slideshow shows what I think is a pretty cool 3D image of the current city-owned acres. We also participate in the San Bruno Mountain H Habitat Conservation Plan, Natural Resources Management, Coordination Efforts and Meetings, and we look for opportunities to augment funds budgeted by council. In the area of open space protection, the committee reviews and approves, did I just, sorry. In 2015, staff worked with OSEC, San Mateo County Parks, and South San Francisco to apply for, and then were awarded Priority Conservation Area Status from the Association of Bay Area Governments for the San Bruno Mountain PCA and surrounding areas. This qualified the city to pursue OBAG funds designated particularly for priority conservation areas. Okay? Oh, this thing is flipping on me more than I wanted. OSEC members met with staff in advance of a call for projects for OBAG II PCA Grant Cycle Number Two, which was announced just about a week ago. We are planning to submit a letter of interest for restoration of the Guadalupe Creek along the Crocker Trail, including clearing drainage ways, removing invasives, and planting natives. Letters are due February 25th. This visual is a draft for planning purposes for our application. OSEC initiated a program in which the Public Works Director sent letters to private property owners regarding bark beetle and pitch canker issues with diseased Monterey pine trees, and advising them on the process for removal. A number of trees that are dead in Crocker Park and other areas have been removed as a result of that program. Also, OSEC's request to council to update the tree removal ordinance has led to review by staff and Planning Commission and OSEC Subcommittee. Other habitat restoration efforts by the committee and staff have included sending letters to local nurseries regarding the sale of invasive plants, the submission of an application to State Senator Jerry Hills, It Should Be a Law contest he holds annually, and participating in the county's weed management areas. The photo shows additional restoration work at Firth Canyon that the council funded back in 2017.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Adrian Atherton, Sustainability Management Analyst. I'll kind of pick up where Karen left off, starting with a Habitat Restoration Day. So after some of the prior vegetation management efforts removed invasive ivy, OSEC recommended a planting day to install native plants. We held this first-of-its-kind event in early February and purchased plants from San Bruno Mountain Watch. It proved to be a very popular event, so we are working with San Bruno Mountain Watch on an event in Owl Canyon on February 9th, and hope to continue these planting days as suitable locations and funding allow. The next in the series of Habitat Restoration events was the Annual Earth Day Event, again held near Monarch and Mission Blue Drives. These events were sponsored by Recology. I understand they've supported these for many years, and last year, South San Francisco Scavenger was also added as a sponsor of the series. Our Summer Habitat Restoration Day removed invasive ivy from Upper Sierra Point Canyon following on some of those other vegetation management efforts. As with the prior events, San Bruno Mountain Watch was again a partner, and you can see some of the dramatic before-and-after shots here in the slide. And then the final event in the 2018 series was Coastal Cleanup Day. After many successful years focused on the lagoon, we found that the area remained in good condition and were able to tackle a new area. This was a marshy area off Harney Way. Again, we had very dramatic results as, from that cleanup effort. The crew enjoyed some burgers and veggie burgers from the Lions Club afterwards, and you know, these Habitat Restoration events are a partnership between OSEC and the Parks and Recreation Commission. They have other joint Subcommittee efforts that have developed a recommendation for the use of the 280 South Hill Funds, and a recommendation for a replacement for the signboard that meets the interests of a variety of community perspectives while being more sustainable. So recommendations on both of these issues will be coming to the council in coming months via the Parks and Recreation Commission. Beyond just the Habitat Restoration events, we have a few other educational events. In 2018, the committee again hosted a booth at Day in the Park, this time promoting the Sunchairs Group Solar Purchasing Program and the Home Intel Residential Energy Efficiency Program. And we offered the opportunity for kids, and kids at heart, to share what they love about the earth or how they protect the planet with these planet flags. We also hosted two Bosca Landscape Education classes, one on water-wise edible plants in the spring, and another in the fall on gray water laundry landscape systems. Last year, we were able to complete a longstanding goal of OSEC's of creating a series of educational videos about proper waste sorting. You might recall this series of sort your rubbish videos from over the summer, which was quite popular on student media, on social media, and was an intern-led project. OSEC also has a strong interest in addressing litter issues, and conceived of Adopt a Spot Trash Stations, which will include waste receptacles, garbage bags dispensed similarly to those mutt-mutt stations, and a sign encouraging people to keep Brisbane beautiful. This pilot program will start with a handful of locations, and installation is expected very soon. At that time, we will also put out some messaging explaining the station's intentions. Educational efforts also included a weekly series of Meatless Mondays articles in the city's email newsletter, and the Earth Day banners, which the committee worked on in 2017, were again posted on Visitation Avenue in the spring. The city's Climate Action Plan, adopted in September 2015, guides a number of activities, including several that I'll cover in following slides. An active CAP Subcommittee has been tackling implementation of the existing plan, and has also been working on a staff training, which we expect to host in the next few months. In addition, the committee began working towards a CAP update for 2030. We are now looking to coordinate that update with the Baylands' specific planning process to ensure these importance effort, important efforts are aligned. The Building Energy Ordinance, which you actually just approved the Phase One Consulting Contract in your consent agenda this evening, is a prime example of the Climate Action Plan measure being implemented. This item's been a high priority item for the committee for a while, and after researching other ordinances and developing a framework, last year, we were able to secure a $200,000 grant from the Air District to move it forward. So again, that consulting contract was just approved, we're looking forward to getting that program started, and expect it'll be a prominent component of our work this year. Another CAP measure and long-time coming project was the city's EV charging station, which opened in February and has seen strong usage since. The station was largely funded by an Air District grant focused on expanding the network of fast chargers, and we appreciate the partnership of the now-former Brisbane Village owners to put this important piece of infrastructure in their parking lot. Staff has also shared resources with Altamar Residents and HOA Board members, and is supporting their efforts to install EV charging stations in one of their parking areas. Yet another CAP program in action, we're promoting the Green Business Program, which is a statewide program administered by the county. We hosted a lunch and learn in September and are pursuing certification for City Hall. The certification checklist overlaps with CAP measures and a number of other ongoing city efforts, such as the Sustainable Purchasing Guide, which will be coming to you as part of a procurement policy update, and efforts to reduce the use of paper in City Hall, for instance, through reviewing file retention policies and Adobe Acrobat Pro for sharing and e-signing documents. There are, of course, a number of staff projects, which were reported to OSEC and received their full support for their consideration and mitigation of environmental impacts. These included the installation of solar panels on City Hall, and the continuation of a sandbag return program. We received a San Mateo County Energy Watch grant to incorporate energy efficiency considerations into the early design phase of the Glen Park Pump Station upgrade, and also perform an energy audit of Mission Blue Center. Staff participated in a program through the Bay Area Renewable Energy Network, also known as BayRen, which provided free consulting services for a zero-net energy study. This included reviewing the pool heating system, as well as City Hall, which is currently undergoing a lighting upgrade, funding through, funded through PG&E on-bill financing. We held a compost giveaway, with Scavenger providing the compost at no charge to the residents or the city, as a thank you for their, for the city's waste reduction efforts. And we also expanded compost to other city facilities, and had some informal staff training on, on proper sorting. We also reported to CDP, formerly known as the Carbon Disclosure Project, on our emissions inventory and climate efforts. And finally, the city received a Platinum Spotlight Beacon Award for municipal greenhouse gas emission, gas reductions of 32% during the time period from 2005 to 2015. This was the city's third beacon award. In 2015, we were first city in the state to receive an overall gold-level beacon award, and in 2016, we received a Platinum Spotlight Award for Sustainability Best Practices. So this statewide program and receiving this award is really a recognition of the many efforts that city council, staff, and OSEC have put forward over the years to be able to drive that impressive level of reductions. And with that, I believe we'd be happy to take any questions.
Perfect. Council questions?
Okay, good work. I see Michelle's here from Open, Open. My microphone wasn't on, I said, I see Michelle's here from Open Space and Ecology, but good work, you know, staff, Karen and Adrian, you know, really appreciate the efforts that you guys put in, but also our community, community members, so. Ask, ask her.
Oh, yes, come up. Would you like to say something?
I'd just like to say it's been a real privilege to serve on the Open Space and Ecology Committee, and to thank the council for their ongoing support, but I would be remiss if I did not mention how incredible our staff is. In particular, Karen, who leads the charge. Adrian has been an amazing addition. Bob Sage, and also, I'd like to compliment Jeff Franco from the Park and Rec Department. Our Habitat Days have been absolutely marvelous, because these staff pitch in and work right alongside everybody. They don't just sit around and hand out donuts and t-shirts. They get in there, and they get dirty, and they work unbelievably hard. And the staff has been so open to all of our different suggestions, and it's just been incredibly great to work with them, and I really want to compliment them. Thank you.
Oh, that's nice. It's, you know, so often we hear, you know, we hear complaints when people come up, or concerns people have, but it's always really great when somebody has a compliment. So thank you for sharing that, and yes, round of applause to our, our staff. You do so much, thank you. Any other council comments or questions?
Well, you all know I'm very happy to see any paper reduction we can get, so let's keep pushing that one forward very hard. Thanks.
Yeah, you know, I just want to thank the OSEC group, I mean, you guys do an awesome job, and, well, the staff. Some of these, these items here, especially, you know, the Climate Action Plan, is, is really important. I mean, that's, that's the major issue that is facing humanity, and, you know, a lot of people sometimes think that, oh, it's a, it's a federal issue, or it's a state issue, but really, you know, it's so much a local issue, and, you know, you guys have been leaders. So, I mean, of course, you know, the next item that we're going to be talking about is, you know, except for the, for the Baylands, but, you know, when you look at the Climate Action Plan, and with this new development, you know, there's going to be a lot of work to be done, you know, and opportunities as well. And so I'm looking forward to hearing, you know, the suggestions and, you know, ideas that, that will come out of your body. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great.
So I, I wanted to make one comment, and thank all the members of the OSEC, and Michelle, who's here tonight, and the staff for working on this, and let it be known that we do have an open position on the Open Space and Ecology Committee, and to let the public know, if they're out there, that we are looking for another team member to join this and keep up the important work that the committee has been working on, and, and add new thoughts and, and ideas to the committee, so.
Yes.
We look forward to having some good applications.
Okay. Do we need a motion to accept this list of accomplishments, or we can?
It never hurts.
Great.
So moved. Make a motion to accept the Open Space and Ecology Committee Report of Accomplishments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on, that brings us to item B, Baylands Planning Process, next. Staff report?
Oh, yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Approval of GP 118 via the passage of Measure JJ definitely sets the stage for a new phase of the Baylands Planning Process. I think staff and I think the council had verbally heard from the developer that they were interested in revising their specific plan, consistent with the provisions of JJ and the, and the general plan as amended. What you have before you in your packet is a letter from the applicant's representative, basically confirming that, indicating they do want to modify their, their current plan application to be consistent with the terms of JJ. So that's for the record, and for, you know, the council to acknowledge that. Again, this is kind of the beginning of another extensive planning process that we foresee occurring over some period of time. You know, there are a number of measures and standards that were set forth in the general plan amendment itself that need to be addressed. Some of these need to be addressed prior to a plan being submitted, some need to be addressed in the plan itself, and some will be more implementation-driven as the, as a plan, if it's successful, is implemented over time. But there are a number of activities that really need to occur before any kind of formal process through the city can begin. And I just wanted to sort of touch base on some of the things that we're aware of that either will be occurring or are occurring. On the applicant's part, you know, again, there are certain responsibilities from different parties, but a lot of these are really the responsibility of the applicant. You know, the requirement, for example, to have a remedial action plan and landfill closure plans approved, that's something the applicant has, has initiated, at least the wraps and the data collection necessary to, to prepare those wraps through the Regional Board and Department of Toxic Substance Control, DTSC. And again, the city does have a consultant who's, who's been engaged in reviewing materials that have been submitted to date between the developer and those regulating bodies, so we expect that will, are, will still be involved in kind of reviewing those technical materials as they, as they come and go. There are other technical studies the applicant is going to have to perform and undertake to support their own planning effort. This may be new geotechnical work, or traffic work, or work to define water needs in a more refined manner to, to, to secure a water supply. So there, they'll have a series of, of technical reports that they'll be working on, or are working on, or will be. I think I want to highlight, for the city's, you know, part of the, what can be done earlier than later, is the whole issue of community engagement. You know, certainly, the Baylands' planning process has been sort of marked by, by extensive community engagement and participation from when it was initiated in 2006. And to date, obviously, the, the, the results of Measure JJ provide some community validated guidance in terms of what is, what is going to happen out on that site, but that's certainly not the end of the community's, or should be the end of the community's engagement. I think there's opportunities for the community to, to take a little deeper dive into how some of the community's values and goals can be incorporated into the development, or reflected in the development. And again, I think there's a benefit of the city proactively leading that sort of process, as opposed to putting the community in a position of, of reacting to the developer's proposal. So it's part of, sort of, the idea of the, the city proactively getting community engagement and involvement in that process. The city did apply and, and was selected to participate in the county's Home for All Program. Home for All is an initiative to facilitate community engagement and dialogue focused on housing within San Mateo County. They worked with four pilot cities the last calendar year, and we're one of, I'm not sure how many they're going to work with this year, but we're very pleased to be selected. They really do specialize in community facilitation. They use professional facilitators to, to help engage the, the community and, and get their, their sort of independent party, they're the trained facilitators, professional facilitators, they're not land-use people, but they are there to try to help a community dialogue occur, and we think that'll be a real asset to the, to the process moving forward. So in the next, in a very short period of time, the city will be working to design and implement a community engagement process with Home for All. This is a precursor to this next phase of Baylands' planning, and expected that a community engagement program would proceed in spring of this year. There's still some work to be done, obviously, to frame that up, and there'll be a lot of outreach and extensive pre, you know, publicity, use the social media, other forums to really get the word out to the community, to be engaged and participate in this effort. So we're really looking forward to that. Again, it's really just an overview of kind of where we see things rolling out in the short term. Certainly, when these pieces come together, the, the technical work is done, the, the developers have the opportunity to hear the community input, and hopefully, will, that will be reflected in, in the specific plan and development agreement that they submit to the city. But at that point, you know, formal application will be submitted by the developer, and that'll start its own sort of formal review process through the Planning Commission, environmental review, and so there'll be then another round of very formal review, like we'd review. And so, there'll be then a, another round of very formal review like we, like we did at the last uh process. So, with that, I'd take any questions or comments you have at this point.
Anyone have any questions?
No.
No? Okay.
Uh, I, I do want to make a comment though, Madam Mayor. Um, you know, there, there's a couple of things in your staff report, John, that, you know, I, I just want to call out and you, and you had mentioned them uh when you gave your staff report, uh that it's crucial that the community be given the opportunity to express its vision as to how the Baylands development as envisioned under the general plan can be incorporated into the fabric of the existing community. I mean, that, that's really important. Uh, you talk about the appropriate, uh that it's appropriate for the community to be uh proactively um, you know, engaged and, or, you know, articulate the community goals and values as they pertain to the Baylands. And that it's okay for us as a community to uh establish expectations on how those goals and values uh will be addressed in the forthcoming specific plan. So, I, 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 I think that, you know, gives us a, a, a good direction, you know, in order to engage the developer in the future. But really, I mean, this is, we ran on a uh, um, you know, retain local control, you know, platform to pass Measure JJ. And um, I hope that, that we lead in that direction.
Okay. Anybody else want to say anything? No? Okay. Um, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Okay, come forward.
Honorable counsel, I'm sure that you're very anxious to move forward with the specific plan and get a lot of community involvement in that, as, as is everybody. But um, I caution us about putting the cart before the horse when we don't really have all the data gaps closed yet and we don't know what mitigation measures will be needed. And um, I don't want people to have expectations that will not be able to be met. Um, for instance, if we have a three-foot cap, how does that affect, you know, the roundhouse? How does that affect different plans? And uh, or if we have to put, you know, thirty feet of dirt over in order to make it mm the ground uh level uh safety, how we meet the uh requirements of Measure JJ. So, I just urge caution that we get all of the information before we get all pie in the sky about our um, about the plan. And uh, because we do uh above and beyond anything, you have a, not only a legal obligation, but a moral obligation to make sure that that land is habitable, safely habitable for the uh intended use. So, I will be here as a constant reminder of that to all of us. Um, safety first. And that was your promise to this community. And I don't want to see that set aside for any kind of uh visionary dreams of what you think the, the new city on the Baylands will be like. Thank you.
Thanks. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no hands, we'll move to council discussion. Um, I think at this point, we just need to acknowledge receipt of the letter from Universal Paragon stating its intent to revise the specific plan to comply with the visions um of the voter-approved General Plan Amendment. Does anyone care to make a motion on that? I think, do we need a motion to, to acknowledge receipt of the letter?
Well, we could have a, a, a motion to accept or acknowledge receipt of the letter and also to um accept the uh, the staff report in terms of your direction.
Can we do that with one motion?
I think so.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we're moving on to item C, Consider Proposal to Organize a Women's Film Festival Lunafest in Brisbane. Staff report, please. Oh, I think we have.
We have a video. Um, but before we play the video, just to give people a background as to what Lunafest is, it's a women's films festival sponsored by Luna uh Bar. Luna Bar is a subsidiary of Cliff Bar. It, back in two thousand, the CEO of Luna decided that there really was a need to have a traveling women's uh video movie because we just, there aren't really very many women who are represented in the film industry. And this is their way of encouraging women to produce films, to be in films and to have films about women. And probably the best thing to do at this moment in time is to show the video and then I'll talk about what our role will be in that.
So, I think there are two. This one, I think, is the trailer.
Okay.
And the other one, I think, is more describing. So, maybe we do that one first? Yeah, the, the one that's a little bit longer. And then, yeah, this one probably should be first.
In an ideal world where I buy my ticket, settle into my seat, and the screen lights up. Where I see a face like mine, hear a name like mine, watch a life like mine. Where the film has two female leads and they talk about something besides a man. Where the director behind the camera is a woman. Where the writer behind this story is a woman. In an ideal world where movies make me feel inspired and admired, represented and heard, understood and powerful. And when I see those credits roll, I see names like Xena, Victoria, Diane, Ava, Allison, Sasha, Saba, Sada. This, this is the world we're building. This is Lunafest.
And so, the next one, I believe, is a trailer of the films for this uh season.
The feeling of playing the drums makes me feel invincible, like I can achieve anything. And that's what I love.
Dear diary, I hate everyone at school.
It's so hard being the only girl, right?
Shoot those boys whose foot's.
Mom, that's a TV show.
So, from those two videos, you get a very good idea of what Lunafest is about. It's about an ability for women to be able to see themselves doing more than what they, what traditionally they've been able to do. The city is looking at having the film festival on March twenty-third. We are looking to partner with the Lions Club because not only do, as a city, do we think it's important that people see themselves being modeled on the screen, but we also want to give money to allow women to partake in film school or to partake in the STEM programs. So, what we're suggesting is that the city raise the money for, through Lunafest for scholarships for women going to colleges in traditionally male-oriented disciplines. So, part of what Lunafest is all about is not only is it about modeling what goes on, but also providing uh charity and providing scholarships and providing money for women's um charities. And probably Madison can say it a little bit better than I can about that, but something that I'm very passionate about is making sure that we do more than just model what we're doing, but we also put the money where it needs to go. And that's really what we're looking to do. Uh, what we would have it is on March twenty-third uh at Mission Blue. We were planning to do it if the city council agrees to it. About six o'clock in the evening, we would partner with uh the Lions Club. We would look at making this more of an event than just the movies. We would try and bring the popcorn machine from the marina if that's possible. We're working with the marina on that. If not, we'll find another way to bring popcorn there to get that movie feeling. We're looking at also bringing in snacks to the Mission Blue, bringing in beer and wine if we can, find a sponsor for that. So, you make it more than than just an event. We're also hoping to get maybe a couple of the filmmakers who part, who participating in this to be part of the event. There are, there's one or two that are on the West Coast, one in San Francisco. Two of the people are, are Dale, one is from Daly City and one is from San Francisco who's part of the event. We're hoping to bring them on. And we're trying to make this more than just a movie night. We're trying to make it more of an educational experience for everyone. Because that's something that's very important that, as you know, in today's society, this is an issue that has gotten a lot of attention. And I think this, I think one of the, you know, the mayor brought this forward and it's something that I think as a city, we're very adamant about is to try and be at the edge of these kinds of community-oriented issues.
Yeah. Great. Thank you, Stuart. So, just, um, yeah, to just give some background on where this is coming from. Um, I have a cousin who works for Cliff Bar, so I've been attending Lunafest for many years. Um, and I went with her this year and she said, you know, you should bring this to Brisbane as the mayor. And she said, I will help you make this happen. And traditionally, in order to um get the rights to show the film, you have to make a three hundred and fifty dollar donation to their um charity, which is called Chicken and Egg Productions. Basically, that money goes towards funding um women in film. But considering my relationship uh with this company, they actually waived it for Brisbane. Um, so, we do not have to pay that three hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we do still get all of the things that um would be provided, which would be Luna Bars for the event, um would be programs for free, would be ticketing portal, as well as posters and other sorts of marketing. Um, and so, I, the thing about, about the film festivals, I have to charge for tickets and then that money has to go to a women's cause. And unfortunately, we don't have any like women's focused causes in town. Um, but I really wanted that money to stay here. So, I thought, and Stuart and I talked about this and he suggested, why don't we partner with the Lions Club and put that money into a fund um for female applicants who need a scholarship um and who are pursuing a career or degree in a male-dominated field? And uh, we would, you know, work out kind of what the guidelines are, but I think we would leave it up to the Lions Club to determine who, who should be awarded that money. And it could be numerous people. If there was enough that year, they could split that up amongst three applicants if they wanted to. Um, so, I'd love to just open it up if anybody has questions.
And just from a financing perspective, what we're anticipating is probably the tickets would be about fifteen dollars is what we're looking at. Uh, we're thinking that maybe we do that as a pre-sale and then do twenty dollars at the door. The Mission Blue can seat about two hundred people in this kind of an atmosphere. That's what we get for live at Mission Blue. We think we'll do, set up the risers. The city council, at their budget, put money aside for new special events as part of the Parks and Recreation Budget, so there would be no need to budget any additional funds for this. This would just be something that we'd be able to do as part of our new special events. And hopefully, it will grow over time. We'll also be looking for sponsorships from companies in town, especially those that might be more, you know, interested in like the STEM or other kinds of areas like that. And we're going to be doing, we, if, if given permission, we would do advertising throughout the area, not just within Brisbane. We'd be focusing on a number of women oriented organizations. We'd also be working with the school, the colleges with their film programs and of, and their organizations as well to get the word out to, get a full house.
Stuart just answered my questions. Thank you.
Anybody else?
What, what uh anticipated date are you thinking of having the festival?
March twenty-third. So, we were thinking about having it maybe sometime in May, but the Lions Club um gave me the feedback that they don't have a lot going on in March. And for them, it would be easier for them to mobilize volunteers during that month. And May is getting close to when the awards would be given out, so they'd kind of want to know how much money was available so they could know how many awards they would be giving in advance of, you know, scholarship process. So, even though it's tight, um, I'm gonna, going to make an effort to make sure that it's completely full. So, this year might be just getting our feet wet and figuring out the nuts and bolts, but I think that there's going to be a lot of interest um outside of town as well as in town. So, I'm hoping it's not going to be too difficult to, to get people interested in attending.
Do, do you know of any other cities in San Mateo County?
There aren't any in San Mateo County. There is one coming up in Berkeley. They're charging thirty-five dollars for their tickets and it's in a gallery, so I think it's a much smaller space. Other than that, the only other one would be in Napa. So, I think that um considering the other closest showing to us is in the East Bay, we may pull people from um the Peninsula and from San Francisco to attend.
All right.
Especially if I can get um, if I can get other women's organizations to come or the filmmakers to come. Um, I did talk to Lori Liu, who has contacts with Emerge, and um she also uh has a contact with Gavin Newsom's wife, who made a film, Misrepresentation, which is all about the same theme. So, you know, if there's a, maybe there's a way to contact her and invite her. So, I think that, um, I'm definitely going to reach out to organizations that I think would have an interest in this. So, you make sure at least in the first year it's full. And then I think that as people from Brisbane understand what the event's all about, it'll be packed on its own with our Brisbane residents year after year and we won't have to do as much of that outreach.
Second. I, I think it's a, a great idea to put our resources for this and I, I really think that you've done a very good job on, on selling me on it so far.
Thanks.
Um, so, I would be in favor of going ahead.
Okay.
With that date.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Oh, I forgot to actually, I forgot to ask members of the public if they wanted to say anything.
Aye.
Okay.
Put me down for a free ticket.
Okay, three tickets. You got it. Okay. So, moving on, that brings us to staff reports. Uh, city managers report on upcoming activities.
Okay. So, we got a series of uh things that are coming up in the next couple of weeks. The uh, the first one, um, this um upcoming Monday, January twenty-first, uh is Martin Luther King Day. Caltrain will be operating their free celebration train to San Francisco. Um, and um, having done that a few times over the years, that was, it's a great event, especially if you have small children. The second item is the.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Um, tunnel work won't interfere with that?
Apparently not. I mean, they're, they're advertising it, so.
Okay.
Go, go back. What, what was your question, Terry?
If the tunnel work um that's going on on weekends and holidays.
Yeah, this is.
Would affect this.
It's on Monday. They're not working on the holiday, right?
No, this is on Monday.
Yeah.
Well, the, I, I didn't, we didn't ask that specific question, but I mean, they're advertising that this event is happening, so.
So, if not, somebody's in trouble. Okay?
That would be a problem, yeah. But we'll assume that they, they've got it right.
Oops.
Um, the STAR Awards will be uh Thursday, January twenty-fourth at the Mission Blue Center, sponsored by the Brisbane Lions Club. Um, on uh January twenty-fifth, um, there will be, um, I believe, a council cities um, um, meeting in which the survivors of the Parkland shooting uh will be present. And I think Councilwoman Cunningham had approached staff about reaching out to the school to try to get letters um of support uh from our students. And uh, so, staff has been working on trying to do that. Um, so, if you have, know or have, uh, I don't believe any of you have small children at this point, but um, we're trying to get kids from BES to participate in that.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Um, so, however we can get the information out to the public to collect these letters that we can take to that dinner and present to these kids who are coming in to talk about their experience, the better. And the more letters we have for these kids, just a little love letters, little notes of encouragement for them for what they've been through. little notes of encouragement for them for what they've been through. Just thought it would be something really nice we could do.
Good idea.
Thanks, Clark.
So you're not really requesting just from students. You're requesting it from all of the public if they'd like to deliver a message.
Absolutely. The only, the only thing I was, was asking was that, that we don't get anything in sealed envelopes, just in case. I'm handing something that might be unsavory to one of these kids. So everything has to be very transparent. If we're going to hand it over from, from Brisbane to these, these kids, I want it nice and clean.
Okay. Great.
The next item, uh, the Mothers of Brisbane shop uh, is coming up on Friday and Saturday, January 25th and 26th at the Mission Blue Center. Um, you can donate. Um, the Friday afternoon program is from 12 to 5:00 and on Saturday from 10 to 3:00. Electronics recycling drop-off event is on Saturday, January 26th at the Berlin Game Caltrain Station from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, uh, offered by the Office of Sustainability with San Mateo County. The North County Fire Authority will be doing basic first aid classes um, on Sunday, January 27th at Station 81. Uh, there are morning and afternoon sessions available and you can go to the North County Fire website and sign up. Uh, Shakespeare's A Comedy of Errors will be playing Saturday, the 2nd at 2:00 PM at the Community Center. And the Artist's Evening of Sharing will be that same day at 7:30 at the Mission Blue Center, at 7:30. And Councilwoman Cunningham will be having office hours on Tuesday, February 5th at City Hall, beginning at 11:00 AM. And then the last item is that our pool uh, will be closed for maintenance from February 4th through 8th.
Okay. That brings us to Mayor Council Matters. Do you want to start at the end, move down?
I'm holding mine for next meeting.
Okay. Do you, we had some.
We have notes.
Oh.
Yes. Um, so.
Do you want us to, do you want to do, I know what you're just talking about, but would, do you want to report out on subcommittees?
Um.
I think the only one we had was public art.
Okay, do you want me to go?
Sure.
Okay, so we, we met, uh, the Public Art Advisory Committee. Um, was a very colorful, very exciting meeting. And we were discussing um, potential sites for future art installations and what that might look like. And uh, the consensus within the room that we thought we'd bring back to, to council was that we'd put out a request for proposals for, for different areas. And the first one would be um, for the concrete wall beside the skate park. And um, was, it was an interesting discussion. I mean, everybody's obviously got their own thought process of, you know, what good art looks like. Um, but rather than put any parameters out there to potential artists, we just thought collectively that just put it out there and see what came back in, especially given the incredible um, responses to the RFP for the library. So that will be the first thing on the agenda. Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, um, I think, I think that um, the proposed sculpture um, by Sangamo is going to be coming back, is that coming back next meeting?
Yes, so Sagmo is, was going to install a piece of art at their property as part of the uh, art, the Public Arts Ordinance. They made the decision that they would rather put money into the Inluwa Fund, but they had already selected an artist. They pride, the piece was already seen by the Public Art Committee as well as by the Parks and Recreation Commission. It was about to go forward to this count, to the council uh, until Sagmo said that they were not going to do it. So the Public Art Committee would like to take, take a step back and see if that piece would be representative of the community, if it was not being paid for by the company, but instead being paid for by the community. So they're going to look at it on, at the January 31st meeting. So my guess is that that will be, that will another, be another interesting meeting to have, to determine what will happen with that.
Yeah, I anticipate, um, there's a split going on um, with it, what is the right direction to go. So I believe that at some point, it'll come back to council to make the final decision about what we do. We can discuss that more when it's agendized. Okay. That's it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Okay, so um, Councilmember Conway and I had two meetings. One was with the Infrastructure Utilities and Franchise Subcommittee. And we went to the marina where they're planning a new maintenance facility. We looked at where it was being considered and made some suggestions. We're hoping to, our suggestion was to move it into the rear parking lot from the waterfront. Um, so back from where the current maintenance facility temporary building is located. And I think we're waiting to hear back how that progresses. Um, if staff has any comments, they can.
Oh, we're just going to put it there, ma'am.
Okay. Good. Um, anything to add to that, Clark?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm good, well.
And then on January 15th, two days ago, um, Councilmember Conway and I again met to, uh, with staff to discuss water capacity issues and how um, the city of Brisbane can move forward with their current allocation of water and how we can um, look at adding something into our city ordinance to be able to regulate um, the uses of water in the city and provide us ourselves with um, a good way to manage it so that there's less problems when the next drought happens. Any?
And this is mainly, mainly aimed towards um, high water users, right? You know, Randy, yeah. Like commercial, commercial business that use.
Yes, sir.
An extremely high amount.
So that will be coming back to the city council once that ordinance is refined. And um, see if we can put something in that protects our water allocation as best possible for all users. And let's see, I think.
There's a, a back, back of the page. Flip it over. Oh.
Um.
We're on this page.
It's upcoming.
So um, Councilmember Lentz and I met with um, the owners of the 3,000, 3,500 Marina Boulevard about possible electronic signboard. And they had a very innovative idea to build a signboard into the wall of their building that would be sort of half advertising and half possibly art. And while it looked very interesting, um, it was the subcommittee's decision that that really wouldn't be appropriate there where we have potential dark sky and um, would be distracting to um, both nature and to freeway traffic, frankly. Um, Councilmember Lentz asked if there was a way to stub it out in their building so that we could look at it maybe at a later date. And um, the applicant, the, the developer really thought that that would be, you know, cost prohibitive for them to plan for something that may never happen. And so they were um, willing to just let that idea fall to the wayside.
Yeah, yeah. Um, it was a, it was a very interesting concept. Um, but as Councilmember Connell said, I mean, it really wasn't appropriate for the site. You know, it's, it's really more of a Vegas thing.
It was very urban.
So, um.
Very urban.
Yeah.
Um, urban and hip. I mean, it was a, an interesting idea and they showed things that were from, I want to say the Conservatory of Music or um, ACT. I forget where it was that they showed, you know, this moving art wall that is behind staircases. And while very interesting, it just did not play well.
It didn't feel like Brisbane?
Didn't feel like.
Yeah, you know, another thing that was very interesting about the, the screen is that if you're in the building, you can see through it. Right? Whereas if you're on the outside, you see the image of whatever they're showing. So uh, yeah, it was, yeah, you know, very interesting technology, but just not the, you know, the right uh, look and feel for that site.
Okay.
And then um, Councilmember Cunningham and I had a Subcommittee on Planning issues. We discussed short-term rentals, VRBO, Airbnb kind of things, and came up with some ideas that we thought would be um, protective of both um, individual property owners to be able to do a limited amount of short-term rentals within their home, but yet keep any of them from being permanent rentals for vacation rentals and take those homes off of the market for actual living in. And staff is going to be coming back with some of those um, recommendations that we made in a, in a type of form that we can bring back to the council and discuss more thoroughly.
Yeah, I hope that we do. I mean, you know, people every now and then, you know, ask me about that. So um, yeah. Hopefully, uh, you guys can bring it back.
We actually, you know, I was, I was impressed with um, how close we were on ideas and how open and well we worked together on sharing those ideas and the concerns that, you know, have changed over the last few years where more people have started using those services and are more comfortable with the um, I won't say underground economy, but the um, uh, sharing economy with, such as Uber and, and, and vacation rentals. And that some of the concerns have changed from being fearful of, you know, crime or safety to more changing of the neighborhoods. And we also looked at it as far as income um, to both a property owner and of the city where it's equitable to the city. So I think it was a really good conversation on where middle ground could be.
Okay. Great.
And I think those are all my subcommittees, except for um, uh, I did have an earlier meeting on the local policymaker groups with Caltrain. And since we're having another meeting next week, I feel odd reporting on this one. But um, they're looking at how Caltrain can work within the electrification and provide service to the stations and how that's going to look for Brisbane. And, and the interesting thing is they're looking from 2040 backwards. So they're anticipating what growth on the Caltrain corridor will be in 2040. And then trying to step back on how we plan for that with growth um, in the infrastructure and on the rail line. So it's an ongoing, interesting conversation that I'll have more information on at our next meeting.
Okay, great. So uh, Cliff and I had a Star City Music Festival Ad Hoc Subcommittee meeting. Um, we discussed what worked well from last year, what didn't. Thoughts on um, you know, getting better bands and bigger bands that have an audience? Um, different ways to utilize some of the marketing dollars this year a little bit more effectively. Um, and also giving our organizers a little bit more for all the hard work that they've done the last two years. Um, we did settle on a date, which is August 17th, 2019. I do have other items that aren't Subcommittee related.
You know, if I could just piggyback on.
Oh, sure, sorry.
So, you know, it, it, the, the Ad Hoc Committee is the Star City Music Festival, but there's really two components. There's the festival and then there's also the half marathon.
Right.
So um, the, the race has gotten approval from the county. So that will be moving forward. Um, the goal is to um, increase the participation from 89 last year to a couple hundred this year. Uh, because the race was new and only had six weeks to um, come together. There wasn't a lot of time to, you know, really promote. And so we had to keep the costs low. But um, the race fee has gone up $10. So instead of um, the city receiving $5 a ticket, now the city will, will receive $15 a ticket for each participant. So that will then go into helping bring down the overhead that um, is required by the city to provide uh, uh, the services, you know, for the music festival, as well as uh, some overhead for the, for the race.
Thank you. So I have other items, um.
Well, we haven't finished Subcommittee yet.
Oh, we can, you wanted to circle back for me then?
Yeah. We had a Baylands Subcommittee meeting, Cliff and I, and uh, we discussed. The Baylands process, which was in the uh, agenda tonight and also um, on um, 15th, two days ago, we uh, discussed the, uh, discussed the Home for All. And then also Council, Cliff and I had a two-by-two Subcommittee meeting in December. And Cliff, you want to go over that if you want?
Sure, yeah, so um, we know that that's a big issue for many members of the community. Um, all of our um, subcommittees are open to the public. Uh, we felt that it was important to advertise to the community. We also reached out to the, um, the school districts. Um, what we had was an update and uh, from the consultants that we've hired to look at the legal and the, the financial and regulatory issues that um, uh, may come up with um, you know, potential educational options. Um, of course, we know that uh, you know, we have between 1,800 and 2,200 housing units. So that's going to double the size of the population, which potentially could double the size of school population. So it's important that, you know, we get that information. Um, but also um, we had um, Skyline College give a presentation. Um, they're interested in having a satellite campus on the Baylands. So um, they showed what that might look like. And so um, on February 21st, uh, the consultants will give a presentation to the full council. Uh, there's anticipation that perhaps Skyline College will also do that as well. So um, but it was a lively meeting and got a lot of good input from the community.
Can I ask what school dis, what uh, school board participation we had? Which, which school districts were represented?
So um, the, the meeting was set up and, and, you know, this is something that I, I was hoping we could talk about. You know, the, the, the title of the, of the Subcommittee is the School Two-by-Two. So um, one of the school board members from, from Brisbane said, well, you know, when you have the school two-by-two, the school board members that are on their two-by-two are thinking it's going to be a two-by-two meeting. But really, the, the meeting that we had was, was for the council to get this update from the consultants. And then we just, as a, as a good gesture, we reached out to the three school districts that are in the area. So, uh, and all three uh, came to the meeting. All three superintendents, um, school board members uh, from all three districts uh, were there in attendance.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
So are you proposing a change in the name of the Subcommittee?
Yeah, I think it should be maybe just the Education Subcommittee, not the School Two-by-Two, but that's something that the Subcommittee could, could do.
Yeah, you could, you can, you can flesh out ideas.
Yeah, we, we could probably bring that back to you. I, I think it's probably two committees. You would still have your two-by-two for your meetings with your um, compatriots from other districts. districts. And then you'd have an Education Subcommittee that would be just for the, the council, two council members. So it'd probably be the same two people, just under two different Subcommittees.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? That's it?
You know, I had a CCAG meeting. So it was a very feisty meeting. So the last two CCAG meetings have been very contentious. So the county's moving forward with an express lane, a toll lane along the 101 from Whipple to the 380. So along the 101 in that section, you have these auxiliary lanes. So the, the plan is to utilize those lanes as regular lanes, not just getting on and off. And, and having the inside lane be a toll lane. So primarily though for high occupancy vehicles, so three or more.
In the middle lane?
No, the, 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 the number one lane.
Oh, okay.
So, so that's, that's been approved. Everyone's on board with that. But there's two issues at play. One is who will operate the, the system? So MTC has this board called BFA. Don't ask me what it stands for, right? But so MTC has, or BFA has the 680 corridor. They're looking to expand into the 880 and also on Highway 80. The Santa Clara Transportation Agency, they have, of course, 101. They'll, they'll have 237. So the VTA, Santa Clara, their offer is we'll operate it. In San Mateo County, you can own it. BFA wants to own and operate. And I haven't found any good reasons why we would give away the ownership. You know, you want to retain that. So you, you know, if you don't like what you, what they're providing, you have an opportunity to back out. You also have more oversight. By going with the BFA product, you then have to be a part of this board, this BFA board, and you get one vote. You have all these other counties that will have the equal voting power. But this corridor of 101, when you look at the revenue that will be generated, it's, you know, between, between 10 and 12, perhaps 15 million dollars a year in profit that will go towards public transportation needs in the county. So there's that issue. Then there's the other issue of...
Why would that be contentious though? Because I mean, the way you're describing it, it seems like the, the decision is obvious.
So when, so you have the CCAG board, but then you also have the Transportation Authority Board. And so, you know, you have these two transportation titans and they're chalking for position. And so the TA voted for the VTA and the CCAG board voted for BFA. We're going to have a very good discussion, I, I will admit, on the CCAG, when, when CCAG addressed it two meetings ago. And, yeah, I won't go into the details of that, but there are certain people who are pro MTC. And they, right now, kind of control the, the top positions at CCAG on the board. So that, that, that was a very close vote, but that's what CCAG decided to do. So now you have the TA going one way, CCAG going the other. So they formed an ad hoc committee to address, hey, we got to come to some kind of an agreement. You can't have, if there isn't a decision to go with either one, well, then you can't have the express lane. And then that goes against what we all want to see happen. So they're meeting on the 25th to kind of work out those details. BFA kind of seeing where the TA was going and that maybe perhaps they might not win the bid, decided to change their tune and go with a operator only and let San Mateo County own it. So to make it more apples to apples.
So, so am I hearing you right that... I'm sorry. Am I hearing you right that if, if the system is owned and/or operated by BFA, the revenues generated would go into a more Bay Area fund? And if it's owned and/or operated by VTA, it would be in a more localized transportation fund?
The net profits have to go to San Mateo County either way.
Okay.
But by owning it, you get to dictate, you know, some of those costs and personnel that you need. And, and some of those details really have not been flushed out very well. BFA has only been in the express lane business for about a year. So that 680 corridor, and that's their only express lane, it, it, yeah, it's only been around for a year. And there's only, there's only two board members on it right now. We'd be the third one, but others would come on board. But you never know, you know, what could potentially, you know, come about from board decisions, right? Once you give up ownership, you're giving up ownership. So then the other issue is who, once those net profits are, are realized, how does it get spent? And both TA and CCAG haven't come up with an idea how to do that. But if you form a new agency, so to speak, like a JPA, then, then, you know, it really muddies the waters and it's not very efficient. So hopefully, you know, through the, through the ad hoc committees, they can come up with a game plan. I did write a letter, you know, as a council member, kind of giving some, some information on, on how to, you know, get over that hump in regards to the two agencies trying to work it out because it has been very hostile, I mean, you know, amongst council members that are involved in transportation. And so other council members or cities, they're not going to really know of anything going on, but it's been, it's been hot, hotly contested.
Is, is this tending to be more of a fight between north versus central county representation? Or more of a power struggle between?
The TA and CCAG, yeah. No, that, that's where it's been. And, you know, a couple of counts, a couple of meetings prior, the TA moved forward to go with, moved forward to go with the VTA. But then they said, oh, well, maybe we shouldn't have a, a joint collaboration of spending the money. Maybe we should just have one agency. And by the way, we think that we're the ones that should...
MTC.
Right, no, the TA. So, but I, I, I think that's a good option to go with, with one agency. But having both the CCAG and the TA come together and determine how the money should be sent before either one is chosen. So that then there's equal representation of, of how that money is spent.
Well, definitely keep us posted on how it goes.
Sure.
Okay. Any, any other subcommittees from you, Cliff?
Nope.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll wrap up with the other things on my list. The city in partnership with Alliance Club potentially is going to begin hosting a food drive for furloughed government employees. And I'm not sure how strong the need is in our community, how many government employees we have, but of course it would be open to any government employee who has, who needs assistance during this time. And we're looking for donations of non-perishable food items as well as personal hygiene products and any just other essentials like toilet paper, paper towels, that sort of thing. So I think we're going to be collecting probably as soon as possible at City Hall and then also at the Senior Center. And then I'll be working closely with Alliance Club and with city staff to determine a time and place when we can do a distribution of these items and bag them all up and give them out to individuals in need. So if you are willing and able, we'd love to get any donations of food or other products you may have. Another thing coming up is our Raccoon Canyon statue unveiling. Very excited about this. This is my luminary article topic for the month, so check that out. The unveiling is going to happen on February 23rd, which is a Saturday at 10:00 AM at Castanhas Canyon, also called Raccoon Canyon. So come out. It's going to be a good time.
What time?
A 10:00 AM. On the 23rd of February. So keep a lookout for that. I also had my first office hours last night. I think it's important to just kind of report out on some of the things that were discussed. So I had concerns from a member of the public about pool locker room cleanliness, also lighting at the intersection of San Benito and Sierra Point. Apparently it's really dark there, so people who are walking sometimes have some close calls with vehicles. So maybe can, I can work with Randy on that. Also lighting on our pathways, like our stairways that people take, little shortcuts. There was also some questions about the Public Arts Ordinance. And there were other items of concern that I'll, I'll either address with staff or I'll bring forward as items for the council to consider. So other than that, we're going to go ahead and move on to city council meeting schedule and goal-setting workshop. Our next regular scheduled meeting is going to be on February 7th at the usual time of 7:30. And we also need to decide on a date for a goal-setting workshop. City manager, do you have any recommendations of a date we should look at?
Yeah, and just for clarification for the council, there will be a closed session on February 7th, so we'll...
Oh, okay.
Have a six o'clock start.
Six?
Pardon me?
Six PM start.
Well, we could probably do 6:30, yeah. The, it's to meet with our, your labor relations negotiator.
Okay. All right. And so goal-setting workshop?
The goal-setting workshop that we annually do, there are some dates in February and on the February 9th or 10th, which is a Saturday or Sunday, or February 23rd or 24th, which are Saturday and Sunday. We need just one of, one of those four dates that works for, for the council.
Well, 23rd is Raccoon Canyon Day.
Yeah.
So, and then the ninth is a planting day. So...
The only, if, if that's the case, if 23rd is out, the only date I can do on this schedule is the 24th.
Okay, let's do that. Does anyone, does that work for everyone else? Oh, well, I would not want to start before then anyway.
Oh, yeah, I can do the 24th.
You, you want to start at like 11 o'clock? 11 AM?
Yeah. Those are the hours I like. Okay, it's all set.
Well, wait, so on, on the 24th, okay, I know we said the 11th, I mean, at 11. I mean, I, I have an event, I can move it or, you know, but I, I prefer to, if, if it was okay with the council to meet a little bit later.
What's your proposed time?
Um, 1 o'clock.
How long do we think this goal-setting workshop is going to take?
Probably eight or nine hours. Usually about three hours.
I'm sorry, you guys, I cannot, I am performing that day.
All right, so...
I just looked my calendar.
Do we have any other, what about the...
Um, we could go into March. Uh, let's see, let's...
Do we really have to have goals?
I choose not to respond to that. We could do the weekend of March 2nd and 3rd, one of those dates.
Okay. I'm free both of those days. I only prefer Sunday, but...
Yeah, I'm all, I'm totally wide open on the 3rd.
March 3rd at 11...
Anytime.
11 AM?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I can do that. I can do that.
Okay.
Cool. All right.
March 3rd and when?
11.
11 AM?
Okay.
Great.
We'll have lunch and we usually go to maybe 2:00 or 3:00 PM?
If we're starting at 11:00 AM, do we really, and only going till 2:00 or 3:00, do we really need lunch?
Yes.
Okay.
You guys are going to hate me.
Okay.
We're heavy snacks.
I'm just...
I need sustenance.
I'm just trying to think that we make it shorter time and...
Well, we can eat and talk. We don't have to look cute. So it's not going to be on camera, right?
Right, you don't have to look cute.
Okay, so I can eat a sandwich and speak at the same time. Okay, moving on. Written communications. So we received three written communications of, one from Laura Librato on November 29th, one from Kim Fillion on January 7th, and one from Deanna Washington on January 16th. That brings us to oral communications number two. Is there any member of the public who wants to speak at this time?
Can I ask a question on our council meeting schedule though?
Sure.
May 18th, am I being crazy or is that a Sunday?
He didn't answer the question though, but he...
I'm sorry, all right, okay, it's a Saturday, but are we really having our council meeting?
No, it's a typo.
It should be May what?
And that is the date. I've already alerted staff that I will not be here.
We would have figured it out by then.
Okay.
Well, I'm just, I, I just knew that because there's an extra week in our council schedule, my, I mean, in, in May, my computer has, you know, when I do council meetings every other week, changed it to where everything from May on has a conflict with other meetings. So I just knew it was right in that period and so we are not having a meeting on the 29th. That will be a free weekend or a free week because of the extra week in the month?
Yes, yes.
Only 1st and 3rd.
Okay.
Delete.
So that brings us to adjournment. Do you have a motion?
So moved?
So moved.
Second. That counts, okay.
Second.
What? I didn't, I was swift. Okay, meeting adjourned.